That'd be great, just a friendly reminder on that. This is being broadcasted live, so act accordingly, which means be nice and be kind and no yelling out there, Mr. Ferdinand. And this, I was just telling Matt, who's kind of new to Nampa. In Nampa, if you come to a chamber luncheon, we can kick it off with the prayer and the pledge, and if you come to a city council meeting here with Mayor Debbie and the council members, we open up with pledge and the prayer. So at this time, I'm going to introduce my friend. She's president of the Chamber Board, used to be in city council and works for St. Luke's. But please help me welcome my friend Jean, who's going to lead us in the pledge and the prayer.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. Please stand, remove your hats, and join me in prayer. First of all, thanks for being here. Dear Heavenly Father, we pray your hand and blessing upon every candidate and their families as they express their vision and desire to represent the residents of the city of Nampa. We ask your abundant grace and guidance today and each day. Lord, we specifically ask for a hedge of protection and peace for your people of the nation of Israel. You call them out by name, and we pray the devastation inflicted upon them by Hamas ends in your justice and mercy reign. Let us remain steadfast in our unequivocal support of your people, and I pray that your truth and light shine boldly. We ask all of this in the precious name of Jesus. Amen. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you for joining us for that. Couple of quick announcements, and then I'll pass the microphone off to our moderators here that will get us going for the evening. But I just want to start out by saying thank you to everybody for being here and those that are watching online. Says a lot about Nampa. When we reached out to, there's nine candidates between District 2, 4, and 6, and every single one of them, all nine of them, have confirmed to be here tonight. And to me, that says a lot about who they are and their willingness to serve our community. So thank you to you guys for being here, and thank you to the others. Let's give them all a round of applause, please. Not an easy task. So again, phones, please, and then you're going to hear from the moderators how the night's going to flow. It is being recorded, so we'll push this out later, and you can push that out to other family and friends. Bathrooms are around the corner, if anybody needs the restrooms. And I think with that, I will get out of the way, I want to introduce our friends that are going to moderate tonight. Teddy Feinberg is the managing editor for the Idaho Press, and Claudia Wetherman, I call you the jack of all trades, communications, marketing, Terry Riley, involved in the community in a lot of different things and has moderated lots of panels for us. So please help me welcome Teddy and Claudia.
Like Mitch said, thanks everyone for being here. Couple just housekeeping items going into this. We have a series of questions for the candidates. Going to take about one to two minutes for each candidate to answer the questions. Mitch will be on timer, so he will hold up his card as you're approaching the minute mark and of course the 1:30 mark. We're doing this just for efficiency, so stay on task with that. We're going to start left to right. We will rotate who answers the first question, so we mix it up in that regard. That's all I have. You have anything to add?
Yeah. No, I just want to say hello and thanks everyone for being here, and we hope that you can stay for the duration of the event and that you'll take time to engage and ask questions of all of our prospective candidates, and they have material available in the lobby as well after all.
One thing I'll also add is after District 6 will be an opportunity for candidates and members of the public to interact, meet each other, shake hands, so just be sure to do that after the second hour. And yeah, we'll get underway.
Teddy, Claudia, just reminder to the candidates, sorry. At 15 seconds, I will hold this up, and right towards the end, I will hold up the red time, and if we all hear my beeper going off, that means the time is up.
All right, well, I'll go ahead and get started with the first question. And we have varying amounts of time for your replies, just so that we can stay on track and make sure we get all nine candidates through this evening. But for this first one, we're offering you a minute and 30 to answer, so we'll start with Natalie Jangula. Please give us a short introduction of who you are, along with the roles that you have served in the community, and how long.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to the chamber for hosting this and the Idaho Press, for Claudia for being here. I'm Natalie Jangula. I'm a fifth-generation Idahoan, and I'm the current incumbent in this race, as I'm currently serving in the Nampa City Council Seat 3. It's been an honor to serve along the side of the citizens, and I look forward to continuing to serve in this capacity. As city council members, and we move, we're in our final term of this at-large term, and this is kind of a unique situation for Nampa, and as we transition into these districts, I have chosen to run for my new district, which is District 2. That way, I align myself with the direction that the city is moving, moving towards. And should I win in that election, I will align myself with my new district, and the council will appoint somebody to finish out the final two years in my current term. I'm proud to be part of the Nampa's team that was once, that was once again voted by the Walleye Hub as the best-run city in America, where they measured the effectiveness of our local leadership and how we manage and spend our public funds, and for the quality of services that the city provides. Nampa is a caring community where people live, work, play, worship, and raise their families, and I am committed to upholding the promise of that mission statement. I believe in the Constitution and that it's a sacred document, and as an elected official, I have the responsibility to uphold it. I'm proud to be an American, and I'm proud to be a citizen of Nampa. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Keith, would you like me to restate the question?
Yeah.
All right. Give us a short introduction of who you are, along with the roles you've served in the community, and how long.
Well, my name is Troy Keith, and I'm learning how to operate this microphone. I came from California about three years ago. I was a Department of Corrections employee. I worked my way through the ranks there up to lieutenant. I got myself involved in various parts of civil service within the Department of Corrections. I served as the, in the budget management branch, as well as in the IT department there. Ended my career with the Associate Director's Office, where we developed new policies and procedures to help improve the use-of-force reviews, certain evidentiary gathering aspects of the department as well. And other than that, I haven't really served any other outside of the Department of Corrections, but that's where I started most of my civil service. Like I said, I'm from California. I've been here for about three years, and I really fell in love with Nampa because it really reminded me a lot of where I grew up. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the town of Rockland in California, but it's a small agricultural town when I first moved there, and it really reminded me a lot of where I grew up, and that's why I fell in love with this town. And I want to continue to see it be that great place where we can come and all be together and be a part of this great community. Thank you.
Amy Hanu, would you like me to repeat the question?
I've got it, thank you.
Okay.
So I'm Amy Hanu. My husband and I moved here with our five children back in 2002, and it's been home to us ever since. There were seven years in there that we had to move away for work, but Nampa was home the minute we came to visit. And we went back east to pack up the family, to move west, and people didn't believe me. And I said, "Well, you've never been to Nampa, Idaho." And so, so raising our family here in Nampa, just involved with the public school system as a mom and as a volunteer for all the years kids went through school, substitute taught in the Nampa School District for a number of years, did the volunteer coaching with the rec center. You know, a lot of our, our boys were athletes, and it was, they don't have a coach, they don't have a team, so guess what? I was the mom who would step up. So, so involved in a way that wasn't really in the public. So a lot of people have asked, "Well, who are you?" Or then they recognize me now, because I guess there was something in the paper. "Why do you want to run?" I get asked that a lot. I want to run because I want to see the city of Nampa remain as it has been for these last 20-plus years that I've been here. Thank you.
And Mr. Dale Reynolds, would you like the question again?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
So I'm Dale Reynolds, and I am a third-generation Idahoan. I was raised in Emmett, Idaho, and I've served on a number of boards and commissions from the Jim County Chamber of Commerce to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I was a PTO president at one time in my life. That was a fun job. And I currently am the Chair of the State Permanent Building Fund Advisory Council, and I sit on city council. I serve as two different positions for city council, as a liaison to VRT, and then also liaison to the Police Department. I take those roles very seriously. And I was, I also serve at my church. I go to Crossroads Community Church here in Nampa. It's important to me to maintain the conservative Christian values that we have in the city of Nampa and to see Nampa remain the conservative, small-town environment that it is.
Just for clarification, you said you represent the council on VRT. Is that Valley Regional Transit?
That's correct. Yes, thank you.
Just for information.
Thank you. Question two, and we'll start with Troy Keith here. Why are you running, and how will you measure your success two years from now? And we'll take a minute for this question. So, Mr. Keith, floor's yours.
Thank you. I feel I represent a growing number of people in Nampa that want to ensure a conservative fiscal responsibility in the city, as well as have a concern over the, the growth planning and making sure that the planning for, for growth within the city kind of keeps what we've all talked about here today, Nampa, the way it is, that it is now, and preserve that. And also, because of my background, I would like to bring up a focus on crime prevention, as well as focusing within that on how we can control the growth of gangs and human trafficking here in Nampa. And what was the rest of the question?
How will you measure your success two years from now?
Well, I would measure my success if I look back and I see Nampa was able to, like we've all talked about, stay a small city, but really, I would really like to look and see the spread of getting people to understand what and how impactful gangs and human trafficking is having on the, the people of Nampa.
Moving on to Amy Hanu. Amy, would you like the question repeated?
No, thank you. So I'm running for a lot of reasons you've already heard, but to keep the integrity of the city of Nampa as it is. Like I said, when I moved here 20-plus years ago, it was somewhere where I always felt safe. My children were safe. Now, my children are raising their children here, and I think that, that is something, you know, making sure that as the city grows, that there's the, the sustainable growth, that there's the services necessary to provide to these new communities that are coming in, and to, to encourage other young families to raise their, their children here. As far as measuring success in two years, to see that there is that sustainable growth, to see how I can actually get more involved in just the function of the city.
And over to Dale Reynolds, would you like the question repeated?
I'm fine, thank you.
Okay.
So in two years, for me, measuring success is, number one, our public safety in the city of Nampa is paramount to me. If we don't keep that level of public safety that we currently have, we'll see our city go downhill really fast, and so it's important to me to maintain that. And by doing so, we have to be fiscally responsible and take care of our budget. And our budget is extremely tight, and every year, we agonize over the budget process at Nampa. And we have a group of, of citizens that help us with that, and they look over that. I know this year, I wore out a couple of highlighters on the budget book. It's important that we do that, but we have to stretch that budget to fit, and part of that, making fit is public safety. We have to have the dollars to keep our public safety there.
And on to Natalie Jangula, would you like the question repeated?
I'm good, thank you. As an elected official, my success should be measured on two things. One, did I uphold the things that I told the people that I would do? And two, how well did I work with the people? Was I responsive? Was I willing to work through the issues and dive into those and help them? What actions did I take to help them solve problems that they were worried about? Being an elected official doesn't mean that I work for the people. It means that I work with them. And I see Cheryl here tonight, and we've worked together on a few really cool things together, and that's been really meaningful to me, so I really appreciate that. And why I'm running, I'm running because I care about the community and the people that live here. I stand firm on the promise that I campaigned on when I, in my last election, that, that I exemplify, that I want to continue to exemplify here, is that I'm going to continue to work with the people and be their voice.
We're ready to move on to the next question, and so we will begin with candidate Amy Hanu on this one. And you have a minute and a half to answer this. Should national politics and issues play a role in city council decision-making? And if so, how?
That's a big question.
That's why you have a minute and a half.
I know, a minute and a half. I think there has to be some boundaries with that. I'm not in favor of, of our national government coming into city government, and yet there are some instances that it might have to, but with, with clear guidance and, you know, direction from city council and the mayor, that it would, it would be very carefully moved forward if it were to be something that there would be no choice. But, but I think the city is to be run for the people, by the people, and I'm just going to say it, we see how our world is going today, and I don't want to see Nampa in the same situation. And so to keep, again, the integrity of the city, I think the city will run very well, being run by the local people.
Should national politics and issues play a role in city council decision-making? If so, how?
So I look at it a little different, having been in county office before this position. I believe that our government starts at the city level, and it goes from the city, county, state, to the national politics. And I feel it's really, really important that we have a voice as city that goes to our state legislature, and then it goes on from there to our national level. And if we don't have a voice and we don't become engaged in our local politics, then the national politics will affect us. But we can, we can control that by having a voice locally and making sure we communicate with our state legislature, and also electing good people to our state house so that we can have a voice at the national level.
And candidate Jangula, should national politics and issues play a role in city council decision-making? If so, how?
Well, in my opinion, the way that it's going right now, we should probably be doing everything completely opposite than what our national government is doing. But thank goodness that we had founding fathers that wrote the 10th Amendment and made us a nation of sovereign states. We are entrusted with the power of local government, and we, as the city of Nampa, have the right to make decisions for ourselves, that we get to choose who we elect to put into these positions, that we want to run our local municipalities. And it's up to us to decide if we're going to, who we put into these positions that are going to run our city exactly how we want it and how our values align with who we are as Nampa. And the federal government should not have any position in making, or any involvement in making decisions for that. Thank you.
Okay. And Mr. Keith, should national politics or issues play a role in city council decision-making? If so...
Yeah, I think the operative word here is "should" it play a role, and the fact is it shouldn't play a role. We all come from the ground up here, and we make decisions for who we are as, as a city first, and just like others have said on the panel, then it goes upwards from there. Will it, will it potentially have impact? It might, but we are individuals who are free-thinking individuals that respect the Constitution as it is, and we can, we can govern ourselves, and that's what we need to do. And we should not allow national politics to influence the city council.
Okay, thank you all.
All right, next question. And we'll start with Dale Reynolds in District 4. What type of development and growth do you think is best for the city? What's the city's role in managing that growth and mitigating its impacts? Additionally, what is your position on single-family versus multifamily housing? Two minutes on this.
So development and growth is a necessary evil. I feel like we have to have that to keep our business environment healthy, and they're going to come here whether we want them to or not. So as a city council role, we can steer that growth and keep that growth where it needs to be. I, I feel like our enclave areas really need to be built up first, and we need to try to protect our farm ground. However, with that being said, these farmers that have ground, and that's their retirement plan, and they want to sell it, I feel like they should be able to develop their ground how they want to develop it. And so there's a fine line there, but if we can, we can steer that growth with zoning and ordinance to, and the comp plan to keep the growth in the enclave areas first, that would be ideal. And then multifamily versus single-family, I feel like there has to be transitional housing there. There's a lot of people in today's world that don't want to be homeowners, and that's, that's great. They should have that option of multifamily. Some people just want to rent, and, but we have to have that transitional housing where we can, let's say, a new family goes from multifamily to owning their first home. And I feel like it's important that we have both kinds of growth in the city of Nampa.
Candidate Jangula, would you like the question repeated?
I think I'm okay, thank you. So I am a, I believe in ag preservation, but agriculture is a huge part of who we are as a community, as Nampa, and that's something that we do need to preserve. But the ugly truth with that is, is that you cannot say that you like to preserve ag land, but that you're against, you're against high-density housing. And the reason for that is because we have to utilize infill to be able to prevent us from having sprawl. And so that's something that we have to find the delicate balance with that. But if we believe that we are a city, as our mission statement states, that we are people that, a city where people can live, work, play, worship, and raise their families, then we have to be a city that provides housing for all of those people in all various stages of life. So mitigating and managing that is where it becomes more complicated. Once the land is annexed and zoned, there is no timeline, and this is something that our citizens don't understand. They, we hear it all the time as council members, "Oh, there's another subdivision going in, and here our council just keeps approving stuff," but that's not the case. There's no time limit. So if something was annexed and zoned into our city, say, 20 years ago, in 2003, that annex and zoning phase is where we get to put conditions on that development. And we, how would the council know 20 years ago what needed to be put onto that condition for it to create smart growth, right? That's the thing we're always trying to strive after. And we can't have smart growth with that if we, if, if we are stuck with these, these developments, or these, this land that's been annexed and zoned at that time, and we can't make any sort of altercations to that. So it makes it very challenging for us as city council, and at any time, they can just decide that they want to develop that land. They have property rights. One thing that I would like to do and see differently is to be able to work with our legislators, and I talked to two of them last night about this, is to try to find some sort of a time limit on that. So if they don't break ground within X amount of years, let's just throw out a number five, and I don't know what that should be, that they have to come back before council and, and maybe have us go ahead and put time limits on that, or put in some new, sorry, time, I saw time, go ahead and put in some sort of conditions there to be able to, to make that more smart growth for the city.
Moving on to candidate Keith, are you good on the question, or do you want again?
Yeah, I think so. Hopefully you'll correct me if I'm not. But in dealing with developing and growth, one of the reasons why I got involved in city council is I wanted to be an agent of change. I didn't want to just be dealing, looking, looking at the status quo. I'm the kind of person that if I see a problem, I'm going to try to, I'm going to come to you with a solution and not just tell you there's a problem. So in looking at the way the city is developing, it's not specifically any problems that I could see out there, the way it's being developed, but I, I know that there are mitigating circumstances that we can reevaluate and look and see how we can better plan the growth of Nampa and still keep the way that we all have apparently agreed up here as a small-town feel the way we like it. As far as single-family versus multiple-family dwellings, there's, there's, excuse me, there's obviously a need for multiple-family dwellings, but there's, there needs to be a look at how we're planning some of those multiple-family dwellings as they're mixed into some of the single-family homes that are in surrounding areas. If you go through some of the cities here, you'll see that you've got these large structures nestled inside these single-family home subdivisions with all of their parking for that apartment area on the street, right in front of all these single-family homes. And I can tell you, those people probably don't enjoy that. So that's something we're going to have to keep in, in mind as we're developing these communities around our idea of providing affordable housing in people that are moving from... around our idea of providing affordable housing in people that are moving from one phase of life to another.
And candidate Hanu, would you like the question again, or are you okay?
Go ahead and repeat it, please.
What type of development and growth do you think is best for the city? What's the city's role in managing that growth and mitigating its impacts? And then additionally, what is your position on single-family versus multifamily housing?
I think part of that growth has to be balanced between commercial, industrial, and residential. If we don't have, you know, commercial, industrial coming in to create jobs for some of these people who are moving into the area, or just people who have grown up in this area, you know, then that leads to housing, you know? So, if there's, if there's a balance between commercial and residential, and then to support the communities, to keep that small-town feel, I think the city has to be involved because if people are left to their own, we know what happens with that. And so, but yet, homeowners, landowners, to do as they choose with their land, and, you know, which then leads to, okay, what is going to be better for the community? The multifamily dwellings or the single-family dwellings? I am a builder in this area, and I see a lot of families, not just families starting out, but also families needing to take in their parents. And so, when I look at multifamily dwellings, I'm not looking at just apartment buildings. I'm also looking at what can these people do on their land? Are they allowed to build the main residence as well as an ADU for parents or for grandchildren that have come back to live on the property? So, a little bit of a different approach there than what we've heard, but I think, again, it is keeping to the integrity of these communities, you know, whether it be apartment buildings or whether it be these subdivisions. Thank you.
Great. Next question, and this one will begin again on the left with candidate Jangula. Do you think current funding for public safety and policing is adequate? And would you support a property tax increase for more funding? This is a one-minute question.
Ooh, that needs to be a five-minute question. Okay. Fun fact, so, our current obstacle that we have is that our police budget is 100% of our property tax for the city of Nampa. And we know that public safety is a huge concern for our citizens. We know that from the way that they communicate with us, and we also do city surveys, so we know that that's important. We need to keep these priorities in mind when we're making these decisions as well. So, next year, we're on track to have 1.2 officers per thousand citizens. The national average is 1.5. So, as you can see, this trajectory does not look great for us. As you can see, this is on, this is on the horizon for becoming a real issue. So, for 2024, the city budget was calculated at a 2.5% increase, and we decided to take the full 3% so that we could fund two additional police officers, and that was the only reason that we chose to do that. We, to put that into perspective, a home with a taxable value after the exemption of $300,000, that 0.5% is a difference of under $6 per household annually. So, as we spent significant time deliberating this difficult decision, knowing that it's a top priority for our citizens and we were elected to be their voice, we felt that the increase of the $6 per household annually was worth the investment to provide better public safety for the city of Nampa. Thank you.
Mr. Keith, would you like the question repeated?
Yes, please.
Do you think funding for, current funding for public safety and policing is adequate? And would you support a property tax increase for more funding? One minute.
I can just say that the funding is probably not enough. I know that this, the way that Nampa has been growing, with growth always comes problems, and with that same problems, you're going to deal with crime and growth and crime. And knowing that, I know that, I would just know that the police department is probably underfunded. You look at the numbers of people that are roped into the horror of human trafficking and how the police department is handcuffed and not being able to deal with those issues in a proper manner, it really stands out that there's not enough support for the police department in that area. Would I support a tax to increase that without really knowing a whole lot about how the budget is funded in that way? I can tell you, I'm not big on raising taxes for the people. I'd be more apt to look at where we could cut and then find ways to support the police department growth that way first.
Amy Hanu, would you like the question repeated?
No, thank you. So, I am all about making sure we have the proper funds in place for our police. I have a family member who just had a medical emergency, and I've spent a lot of time between Seattle and Portland these last three weeks and seeing what's happened there. I came home to Nampa Tuesday night, very, very thankful to see the police officers I saw on the road. And so, I think it's something that has to be funded to provide the public safety that's needed. And, you know, we talk about, you know, supporting a tax increase with all these new homes coming in that should bring in some additional revenue, but maybe there's other ways to explore to get the funding that's needed to keep the police force funded as needed.
All right. And on to Dale Reynolds. Do you need the question repeated?
I'm fine. Thank you. So, there's a funding adequate. It's never enough funding, and for where we're headed, we're going to need to figure out creative ways to increase that funding. And that's all across departments in the city currently. But the police department is important, and keeping our public safety at a high level is important. Do I support a tax for more funding? That's not our role. If there was a separate taxing district, it would have to go through the legislature to do that, and I know that's been explored. But I am about trying to figure out ways within our budget to increase the public safety funding. And part of that constraint that we have currently is from a House bill that really, really hurt the cities. And I feel like we can probably be lobbyists towards making change for that, and that will help us tremendously in Nampa.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving right along. Recent growth has produced more traffic. What can the city do, what can the city do to alleviate that congestion? We're starting in District 2 with Troy Keith.
Oh, thank you. You know, traffic and growth go hand in hand, and when you're dealing with rural roads that were never meant to support the level of traffic that is moving across them, you're going to have to find unique and creative ways to deal with the traffic. We've all seen all of the roadwork that's currently going on. I support that because it definitely needs to be done. But I don't, yeah, I don't really know exactly how to address that issue at this point as far as how would we deal with traffic, because a lot of it's already being handled, and we just have to support it best we can.
On to candidate Hanu. Again, recent growth has produced more traffic. What can the city do to alleviate congestion on the roads?
Stop going. That is a challenging question because there is, yeah, these roads weren't designed to support all of the growth that there has been. But I think just continuing to explore options to see where is the heavy traffic at what times of day, just keeping the city lights running, you know, the stoplights, make sure that they're on a schedule that fits some of the basic, to me, basic things that go along with traffic. As far as road expansion, there's, just short of taking people's public property to build a road through their yard. There are some areas of Nampa, there's nothing that can be done. And so, you know, just continuing to do the studies to see, again, where is the heavy traffic problem areas and finding the solutions.
And on to candidate Reynolds.
So, our current public works department has done a fantastic job of trying to alleviate some of the traffic issues with light timing, and it's really helped out overall in the city. They're in the process also of opening up a real-time traffic center, and if you ever get a chance to go over to the police department and tour that, it's fantastic. But it'll be online shortly. But they're going to sit there and watch light timing, and they will be able to unload certain intersections quicker by having an individual do that. And I think that it's a big improvement for our city, and it's, it was a forward-thinking approach to where we are, to get there today.
And candidate Jangula.
Thank you. Well, starting off, the Highway District, the Highway 16 project is going to be a huge improvement for our city. So, come 2026, that will be awesome to have that. That will alleviate a lot of our traffic congestion inside the city itself. But we kind of are just kind of in a place where we have to endure these growing pains, unfortunately. We have to be patient. I know that our staff is diligently working really hard to get our infrastructure caught back up, and they're, they're doing a really good job. It's just that we grew so fast, so that's just going to be part of the process. But what Dale said too, that light with the real time, that's going to be so awesome to have, and there's one part of our district is, that's going to be part of, right by the Idaho Center. So, when those concerts get out, they're going to be able to adjust that in real time so that that light will just stay on and that traffic will just flow. And so, that's going to be another way that we can alleviate the traffic there. And then also, during rush hour traffic, that gets so backed up and congested there that we'll be able to just keep that traffic flowing. So, that's going to make a big difference once we have that up and going. Thank you.
All right. So, this next question, we're starting with candidate Hanu. An effort is underway to create an auditorium district that could fund Nampa's entertainment venues with a lodging tax, and by that I mean the Fort Idaho Center and the Idaho, or the Nampa Civic Center. Do you support the idea of an auditorium district? Why or why not?
How long?
One minute. Oh, take a minute and a half.
Minute and a half. All right.
Yeah, we're running.
Thank you. So, that comes with growth, and I think, you know, as we've heard the discussion already, you know, of how to support the city public safety, you know, with, you know, concerts and events and people coming into town, that is a way to, you know, it might have to happen to support the city to provide something like an auditorium district. And what that looks like and how it all plays out, I think having, having the time to investigate and what are you talking for tax? You know, if it's going to be astronomical, you're not going to get people in to come to travel. So, finding a balance there to bring the city some revenue as it needs without it being outpricing the hotels to come in to do that, or the current hotels even to have to have that tax to pass on to their customers.
Candidate Reynolds, would you like the question repeated?
I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay.
I think auditorium district is important for our community. It will add dollars, necessary dollars for some of the venues that we have here, and ultimately will increase tourism, I believe, because we will have better amenities. So, I think it's absolutely necessary that we do that.
Okay. Natalie Jangula. The effort underway to create an auditorium district that could fund Nampa's entertainment venues, the Fort Idaho Center and Civic Center, with a lodging tax. Do you support the idea? Why or why not?
I'm going to say maybe, and if you asked me this yesterday, I would have said yes. But here's part of the process is, for those of you who don't know what an auditorium district is, it's just an extra tax that we can put on citizens that are coming into the community that are renting hotels. So, it's that additional tax at the end when you're checking out. And therefore, in theory, people are paying into the city, and so, it's helping support that so that it alleviates tax from the citizens. But last night, when I met with some constituents in the Legislative District for 13, we talked about this, and they brought up some concerns with it, some concerns that I had not thought about. And that's part of the process is listening to the constituents, what their concerns are, and then diving into the issues. And so, that's why I'm sitting on a maybe on this one, because after last night in our conversation, I need to just do a little bit more research to see if that's going to make complete sense to stand firm on that position. So, as of now, I think that I could possibly support it, but I just need to read the Idaho legislation a little bit deeper to really understand what that would mean for us in the city of Nampa.
And candidate Keith, would you like the question repeated?
No, I'm fine. I've never been a fan of additional taxes. There's certainly a way we can look at this, and the problem with a lodging tax is that you're putting a tax on hotels that they're charging anybody who stays in that location as opposed to people that are specifically participating in any event at a particular venue there. I'd be more in support of somebody who's actually using that particular district for ticket tax or something like that, or use tax of some kind, so the people that are actually benefiting from whatever's going on in that district, that they're paying for what's going forward as opposed to putting the burden on a business that's trying to stay afloat.
All right. Last question. We'll start with candidate Reynolds in District 4. Why are you the best candidate?
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
I feel like I'm the best candidate for this position because of all the wisdom that God has imparted me with over these 52 years of living. I feel, I was told to me today, I feel like if I died five minutes from now, I've lived three or four lives, so I'm fortunate that way. But the wisdom and the things that you pick up in life from the people you're exposed to and the positions that you hold are super important, and they all lead somewhere if you let them. And I've always been involved in some way, shape, or form. I've, my favorite saying is, "If you want to complain, then you should be involved. And if you don't want to be involved, then don't complain." So, for me, I feel like I'm the best candidate because I've always willing to stand up for something and raise my hand, whether it be volunteering at church, or I've been on the God and Country Board for the past 10 years, and that's a local Nampa event that's super important for our community. And I just like to be involved and make a change, and it's really important for me to keep the conservative nature of Nampa intact. And...
Candidate Jangula, why are you the best candidate?
My fifth-generation Idahoan roots just give me a unique perspective to this community. I'm very passionate about who we are as Nampa, and I will keep working along the sides of my constituents as we endure these growing pains of our changing city. I will continue to read through the federal grants and push back against any monies with strings attached that don't align with who we are as Nampa. I will continue to be an ally and a supporter for our law enforcement, and I promise to uphold the vision that Nampa has. I always dive into the issues really deeply, and I do my research and I study, and Darrell's back there, so I'm going to make this joke, that he always says that I take more notes than anyone he ever knows. I am always writing it down, and I'm really doing my research and studying, and I take it seriously. I love, I love what I do. I love the people here, and I want to make sure that I'm educated and making the best decisions so that our city can grow in the appropriate ways. So, thank you.
And candidate Keith, why are you the best candidate?
I got you beat by seven years over there, just so you know. I am not a native to Idaho. I'm not a native to Nampa, but I still think that I got here for the right reasons, and I represent a larger group of people and a group of people that's going to continue to grow here in Nampa as people who come here because they love the small town, they love the way this town is put together. The flea market that's rated number one here in the state of Idaho is here in Nampa. These are all things that we loved, and I want to preserve that. I also am deeply involved in my church and would love to continue to use biblical values to... to push out any changes or growth patterns that we continue to see here in Nampa.
And candidate Hanu, why are you the best candidate?
Good question. As I've sat up here on this side of all of you, I've kind of pondered that, and I've been asked that. Why are you running? Why are you the best candidate? What are you going to do for the city of Nampa? And I said, well, I'll find out. What can I do? I have felt a calling to serve in this capacity, and I've kind of questioned that. But every time that I've prayed about it, it's just come back that now is the time. And so I might not be as up on current politics of the city at this moment, but I'm a quick learner. But I think bringing a fresh perspective, you know, bringing... I know grew me and my family, and would love to be able to give back in some way, shape, or form. And so I go forward prayerfully, and just am willing to do what I can to serve this community that's been so good to me and my family. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you all, the candidates of District 2 and the candidates of District 4. We're going to take about a five-minute break here, but we encourage the four of you to stay so that at the end of the forum, the people here can ask questions and engage with you. So we'll excuse you from the dais, and we'll reset. Everybody, here's a good time, about five minutes, to take a little bathroom break.
Quick announcement, I would be remiss not to recognize some friends in the crowd. Current council, Randy Haverfield is here, Victor Rodriguez, Darrell Brunner's back there, Mayor Kling. We wanted to say thank you to you as well. And Amy Bowman, always thank you for everything. Teddy and Claudia, your taskmasters, we're going to switch it out. Quick time for the bathroom, and then we'll get going. District 6, you can make your way up in a moment, and remember, watch how they answer their questions.
I owned and operated my own merchant services credit card business in Nampa for seventeen years. And before that, I worked for Albertson's in management for ten years. I'm very involved in food access for all and attainable housing for our current Nampa residents. And that's all I'd probably have time for.
All right, our next candidate in District Six, Jennifer Niles. Would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I think I've got it.
All right, you have a minute and a half.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Niles. I have grown up here. My dad was born in Caldwell, moved away, but wanted to come back when I was shortly after I was born. My parents wanted to raise me here in Idaho where my dad was raised. And I've been in Nampa the whole time. I am now raising my own son. He's over there. He's probably going to make lots of noise. I am currently serving on my subdivision HOA. But other than this, I am trying to take my step first steps into helping serve my community with doing this. And yeah, I just want to get more involved and put myself out there.
The next candidate is David Lambert. Tell us about yourself and the roles you've served in the community and how long? Minute and a half.
Minute and a half. We could be here a lot longer than that. My name is David Lambert. I just moved here. I'm not a person that's lived here all their life. I my wife and I researched Treasure Valley for several years before we decided to move up here. Came up from Arizona. My wife and I had adopted three underprivileged children from birth, and we decided we wanted Nampa to be our home. So we moved up here. Things I've done in the community, I was served on Benson City Council in Benson, Arizona for ten years. And I was also, after I got off the council, I decided to get on Planning and Zoning Commission so I could work on the development side of the city. So I did that for two years before I moved up here. Other things I've done is I've been an officer in the American Legion because after I got out of the military, I wanted to spend my time serving the community and serving the veterans and helping them out. And so I've been on the American Legion for twenty-one years. Fifteen of that has been on the Officers Corps, everything from district level all the way to the city and posts. So I just wanted to run and everything else. I put my name on the on the ballot to see what the city was about and get more involved in the community here in Nampa.
Thank you. And finally, the final candidate in District Six, Sebastian Griffin. Do you want the question repeated?
I'm OK. Thank you. My name's Sebastian Griffin. I'm a fifth generation Idahoan and a Nampa native. This is actually where I graduated from high school. I got my associate's degree from the College of Western Idaho here in Nampa. I graduated at Boise State University, and I'm currently pursuing my law degree as well as a master's in accounting and tax. Not only that, I'm a small business owner. I'm rooted right here in Nampa. This is my home, and you hear the squawking in the corner. That's my child. So I apologize in advance. I've previously served on the board for the Nampa Lions Club. I'm a current chief judge for Canyon County's Elections Office to be able to help ensure election integrity here in Canyon County and in Nampa. And I frequent almost every, almost every, city council, school board, and community event that I can squeeze in. So I'm excited to be here. I'm grateful that all of you are attending. None of this would be possible without individuals getting involved. And I don't think that's spoken enough. So I'm grateful for you all for coming and supporting each of us in our decision to try and serve our community and be stewards of Nampa. Thank you.
Thank you. Question two, we will start with candidate Potter. Why are you running? And how will you measure your success two years from now?
Well, I am running. How long do I have, Mitch?
Sorry, you have a minute.
OK. I'm running for City Council, District Six, because we need to find a balance between growth, development, and preserving our cherished ag lands while addressing citizens' concerns about traffic and making sure that our police force is well-supported without overtaxing our citizens. The person that makes decisions for District Six is also going to be making decisions for this entire city. And I know this city. This is not the first time that I've sought out this seat in the Nampa City Council. When Sandy Levi resigned her seat in 2022, the mayor sought applications to fill the position, and my application was submitted to the city, and we were screened and graded by local citizens and city leaders. Three applications were brought forth, and I was one of them, but Councilman Reynolds was ultimately picked for that. I've attended every city council meeting for the last seven years, missing four. I am a city council nerd. How would I measure my success would be in what the citizens would like Councilwoman Jangula, Councilwoman Jangula had said, how I listen to my constituents, that report card would be key. And also, how many police officers are funded? Because we can maximize that. That's how I would measure that.
Candidate Niles, why are you running? And how will you measure your success two years from now?
Yeah, I am running because I have voted many a time, and there was not a whole lot of options in the choices of what was on the ballot. Sometimes there'd be one person to vote for. And to me, that's not really a choice when there's only one person on the ballot. I decided to throw my name in the ring because I wanted there to be more options, and there turned out to be a lot of options for the seat. And a lot of it is, I want to be the change that I've wanted to see. I don't, I have different values than I would say most people in the government of Idaho. And I just want to be that change that I want to see. And success would be how the citizens feel, and if I've made it a better place for everyone.
Candidate Lambert, why are you running? And how will you measure your success two years from now?
I'm running to help serve the public. I would actually be a public servant, be a voice for them on the city council. Since we actually went down to districts this time instead of members-at-large, it's actually more of a unique community, and it's more of a close-knit community, and be able to bring their voices forward to the council to make better decisions. And so I've been in a servant role since I got out of the military, and that's what I enjoy, and that's what I like doing. So how would I rate myself? I wouldn't. You would. You actually do, as Council, as Council candidate Potter said, a report card. You guys would do the report card. You guys would tell me how I'm doing, how I'm not doing, what direction you want me to go. I'm just a voice for you. That's how I would rate myself.
Candidate Griffin, the floor is yours. Would you like the question repeated?
I'm OK. Thank you. I love Nampa. It's plain and simple. I know all of you love Nampa because you're spending your Thursday evening here listening to the candidates who also love Nampa. This is our home. This is where my wife and I chose to plant our roots. This is where we want to raise up our baby, our future babies, hopefully many, and a lot of grandbabies. And it's concerning in the same sense. Nampa is the greatest place to live, work, play, worship, and raise a family. And I want to ensure that that continues. But I'm just one vote in all of this. One of the biggest things that I think I could be scored on as an individual is keeping a clear fiscal grade book, grade record on my voting record. Nampa has a relatively low tax levy rate, and I'll vote to ensure that that maintains and is consistent. Inflation's through the roof. We can't go now and start pitpocketing every Nampa citizen during the tough times. We need to be conservatives. I'm a conservative. That's why I'm running. Jacob Bauer, the former councilman in this seat, said, Sebastian, will you run for city council? And I said, no, I will not. He said, Sebastian, run for city council. And I said, no, I won't. He said, keep your heart open, keep your mind open to it.
We've hit the time limit.
I've answered the call to serve, and I hope to be a great public servant to all of you.
Thank you.
Candidate Solis, do you need the question repeated?
Yeah, please.
Why are you running? And how will you measure your success two years from now?
Well, just like everyone else here, I want to make a difference. I want to put myself forward in a position to represent my district and Nampa citizens to the utmost, fullest, and strongest, and loudest, and proudest voice that they deserve. And I want to keep this city as beautiful as it is for my son, especially his generations to come. I'm not a career politician. I am not a business owner. I don't have an agenda. I don't, I don't have endorsements. I'm just simply a father, husband, taxpayer, homeowner. I became interested recently when the seat was vacated, and it wasn't filled immediately, which I understand because the election was coming up. And I began to pay a lot more attention recently, now that I have a mortgage and, you know, yeah, trust me, now that I have a mortgage and, you know, it's gone up and down. But people are moving here so quickly. And the reason is, it's simple. The people are moving back to America, and America's right here in this valley. And if I had to measure my success, it would be maintaining ourselves as the best-run city and a stronger and a stronger, faster public safety.
Thank you very much. All right, we will move on to the next question, and this time we will begin with candidate Niles. Should national politics and issues play a role in city council decision-making? If so, how?
A minute, a minute thirty?
Minute thirty. I'm sorry.
I, as city council, I, I'm sorry. I think that politics shouldn't play a big role in what you do as a city council member. Whatever your political affiliations shouldn't matter. What should matter is what you're doing for the citizens of your district and your city, and what they want and what they need. It shouldn't matter what your opinions are and what you want. It matters what the people want. And as long as nobody's stripping the rights of anybody, I think that the federal government shouldn't be overreaching into City Hall or City Council as long as, yeah, everyone's rights are still their rights, and everyone still has their freedoms. Yeah.
Same question. Do you need it repeated?
Please.
What are, should national politics and issues play a role in city council decision-making? If so, how? You have a minute and a half.
Thank you. Well, that's kind of a double-edged sword. As city council members, we have to listen to what the what the federal government votes on. We don't have to do what they say. We have to, but listening to why they voted for something, if they if they're voting on it, helps us make a better determination on what's better for the city here at a local level. I mean, I watch the national politics. I watch county politics. I watch all the different things, especially when I was on city council, because I wanted to know what's happening outside the city, because the decisions we make as a city, as a council, affects locally, and it also expands out to the county, and it also expands out to the state. We are a sovereign state, and I, and so we make our own local laws. But listening to what the other politicians' opinions are can make or break things. Just like Councilman Jangula had mentioned, she, she was firm on one of the decisions on the tax, the authority tax or the tax for housing. And now she's a maybe, because she listened to what's going on around her and what's affecting that. So listening to other politicians and listening to our constituents is what helps make the determination up here to make the right decision for our local laws. Thank you.
All right. Do you need the question repeated, Mr. Griffin?
Our national politics are a great example of what we do not want in Nampa. It's a mess. Right now, we need to make a decision as a city, and we do this every election, on what's the direction for the next four years. We need to be electing individuals that are conservative in nature, physically conservative, to maintain the balanced budget for individuals here. When we get into the muck, it drags us all down. Local government, city council, is the closest government to the people, and that's how it should be. We do not need a top-down system. It needs to be bottom-up. We need individuals and elected officials that are willing to go and speak to their constituents and say, what is going on in your life, and how can I vote to make sure that you're being sustained, that your quality of life is maintained? When we get into the polarization topics, it's hard to navigate. But at the end of the day, it's coming back to our local officials and saying, how can we get involved? What could we be doing better? Taking that back to our districts, our newly formed districts, and asking the same questions and bringing it bottom-up. So I don't think that we need to be getting into the muck of the national and federal issues. We have to look at federal grants, because that's how a city maintains their budget. But you need to look at the strings attached to every one of those grants that you're taking to ensure that we are maintaining a good fiscal balanced budget.
All right. Thank you. Minute and a half for your response, Mr. Solis. Should national politics and issues play a role in city council decision-making? If so, how?
It's a double-edged sword with that question, but in my opinion, no. I think that we are voted directly by the people, not, not just like how it is for a presidential one where we can only make the vote, but it doesn't matter in the end because of our electoral college and the way it's set up. But I do agree with Sebastian on a lot of it, that we need to make decisions with the people. We're not here to make decisions for the people. But I mean, we saw how that went when we had the coronavirus or whatever else happened with that. I think we did a pretty good job in Nampa. There were some things that we did that were pretty stupid, but, you know, what else, you know, who else wasn't doing that? But in short, I think that, yeah, it does affect us, but it shouldn't. And we need to do our duty up here and work directly with everyone who's watching and in the audience and in our districts.
And Marjorie Potter, do you need the question repeated?
I don't think so. I'm good. Less government is the best government. But I would like to mention that city councils, per view, is budget, land use, and ordinances. We really don't have a say in a lot of things that are happening in our national government unless we're talking to our state representatives, which some are right here in the room, and making sure that they're involved in hearing what we want. It should go bottom-up. Of course, with grants and things that they're maximizing those for our city, we do have, there are stipulations that we have to abide by certain federal guidelines in there. But other than that, those are the three things: budget, land use, ordinance. I really just care about what's in my backyard. In Nampa, I care about what's happening right here around me. I can't do much about what's happening outside of that. So I'll leave that up to my state reps that are sitting here right now to take care of that. But I'll continue to tell them what you want in that way, and they can carry that message from the bottom up.
Thank you.
We will start this question with candidate Lambert. What type of development and growth do you think is best for Nampa? And what's the city's role in managing growth? Additionally, please include your position on single-family versus multifamily housing. You have two minutes to answer, and I can repeat it if you would like.
A lot of information on that one, but I'm good. Well, the general development plan is what's set in place that decides or that that actually has it laid out what's going to go where and how it's going to be done out. I've, I've had extensive years doing the general development plan on both sides of the, of the spectrum, on the city council side, also as a planning and zoning commission, and developing it and utilizing it. So the city council can make changes to it, you know, as needed. But there is a big divide between multifamily developing and also single-family developing. I would love to see if we were 100% single-family development, honestly. But there is a need for apartments, and there's a need for duplexes, and there's a need for all these multifamily structures, whether they're renting, whether they're, you know, townhouses, whether they're buying, whether, you know, there's a lot of determination on why people are coming here. But I can tell you that they are coming. They're coming from California. They're coming from all the states south, because this is the best place to live. And so having both multifamily and single-family development is where we have to split the difference, and we have to build conservatively in each of those directions. So this way, we can be attentive to the people that are moving here, whether they're renting, whether they're owning. And so that's, like I say, it's a, it's a great place to live, and I believe that we have to have both of those, but build conservatively and build smart. Thank you.
Candidate Griffin, do you want the question repeated?
I'm OK.
You have two minutes.
Thank you so much. The main point of the question, what, what's the best kind of growth? And that's managed growth. Right now, we have an opportunity, whether to go down the path of high density, massive spread and sprawl, taking out all of our ag land, or we have the opportunity to do infill, to follow the future land use map that I didn't get to be a part of, but that as a council, we have to follow, and we get to manage that. Every project and every developer has the right to a public hearing. They have the right to put in an application and hear their project. Not every project has the right to get passed. Not every project has the right for high-density, 10, 12 stories high. If it's not conducive to the area, we should not pass it. With that being said, single-family versus multifamily, there are areas for that within the city. I don't think we need to be pressuring our lag, our ag landowners to put more sprawl out off of Midway Boulevard or Midway Road. We don't have the infrastructure out there. Why would we go and put 1,000 homes off of Midway when our roads can barely support the homes that are there now? We need managed growth. We need smart growth. There are areas where it is conducive, right off the Karcher Boulevard. We have the 208. Those are where apartments belong, because you're hopping a skip right off the freeway, and then you become Boise's issue when it comes to congestion and traffic. It's not necessary in South Napa. It's not necessary to be putting the pressure on our ag land and putting out sprawl. We need infill. That's where those projects should be going, and that we need to be smart and stewards to the areas in which we're about to represent and the city as a whole. Thank you.
Candidate Solis, would you like the question repeated?
Yes, please.
What type of development and growth do you think is best for Nampa? And what's the city's role in managing growth? Please include your position on single versus multifamily housing, and please do so in two minutes.
OK. Well, it's my turn to beat the dead horse now. It's, it's kind of crazy, just in the past 10 years, how much has changed in the city. I remember being a kid driving down the boulevard. We still had that gas station. That's a car wash now. We, we have Karcher interchange that was built. We have Costco. It takes me 30 minutes to get across the bridge to get beer and diapers on a Saturday afternoon. And it's, it's getting a little crazy. But just like I said in my earlier question, we, it's inevitable. People are going to want to move back to America, and they're coming here because they know why. And in my opinion, I am not a big fan of apartments, but not everyone is going to be able to own a piece of land when they come here, whether it be the price of it or how much of it that there is. I hate the traffic, but just like Sebastian said, are we going to drop 1,000 single residential, single-family homes? Or are we going to be able to fill up the areas that we've already identified with apartments, duplexes, and whatnot on roads that already aren't ready for this type of traffic? How much longer until 55, all the way down to Homedale, becomes a freeway? How long until that's no longer a stoplight? It's just a freeway all the way down? And that just comes down to our ability to, to be as vigilant as we can to plan these roads accordingly. How long until we need fire station number nine? How long until we need another police substation, another Canyon County paramedic substation? These are all things that we need to keep in mind, especially when we're building up high and tight and out wide.
Candidate Potter, would you like the question repeated?
No, thank you. This is right up my alley, as I do chair the Region 3000 Coalition, and to bring affordable, attainable housing for our workforce and others in the community. I'm a strong proponent of building multifamily housing along our transportation routes and services to address our traffic dilemma. Mixed-use housing and small community development projects with services located close by would cut down on vehicle trips. All those roads are not, don't all belong to us, so we don't have a lot of say in what happens to a lot of those main fairways. But I was part of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and I encourage all of you to come out and be a part of that when that happens, because the community is the one that said where that, where those things should be zoned, what should go in those areas. Everybody had plenty of opportunity to put that, put their two cents in, in that area. So then now people move in, and they don't want that in, you know, they think that shouldn't be what goes in their area, but it was already zoned for that. Of course, I don't want to eat up our ag lands. My father-in-law is a farmer and a builder, and he still has his hayfields out there. He doesn't want to let go of them. But people should be able to do what they want with their land as well. So there are other things like ag trusts, which would take too long to go into, that could help preserve that ag land. But I think that community mixed housing is how we could take care of that residential and multifamily housing as well for the people that need that. Not everybody chooses, wants to live in a single-family house. And we should have community growth as well, so.
And candidate Niles, would you like the question repeated?
No, I'm OK.
OK.
I actually agree with candidate Potter on a lot of basically everything. Our growth is happening, whether we want it to or not. And a lot of that growth is preventing people who've been here from being able to afford even an apartment. And to help with that would be more housing growth, more multifamily homes and, and areas. It's a hard pill to swallow, but that's what's going to help with the cost of homes is having more inventory. And I hate hearing how a family is struggling and has to go an hour and a half out of the city, even though they work here, because they can't afford anything in the valley. So I am all for building multifamily homes and even single-family dwellings, as long as it helps our citizens be able to have a roof over their heads.
All right, on to the next question, and we'll begin this one with candidate Griffin. Do you think funding for public safety and policing is adequate? Do you think funding for public safety and policing is adequate? And would you support a property tax increase for more funding for law enforcement?
How much time?
A minute and a half.
Minute and a half, thank you. Every year, the city puts out a survey to the masses, to Napa citizens, and consistently, one of the top issues is public safety. The other's traffic and the third's being taxes. And unfortunately, with how our system is set up, property taxes and public safety, i.e. our officers, directly correlate. Our last council did the right thing by taking the full 3% to support our police officers and to get us two more officers here in Napa. I think that's essential and it's important. It's something that the citizens have said time and time again, is essential, it's necessary, and it's what we need to do to feel safe. This decision, even though it's going to be made by one of us here in a few short months, ultimately has to go back to the citizens and what their thoughts are. And time and time again, the citizens said, "We need more public safety." So in that sense, I would be a supporter of more adequate funding for public safety. It can be a slippery slope and it can be a bottomless pit, but right now, where the state average is 1 and 1/2 officers, we're at 1.2. We're not adequately staffed for the population. However, the city council currently is taking steps to make sure we are and I will be a supporting vote for public safety to make sure it continues to be the same way.
Great, next candidate, Solis, would you like the question repeated?
Yes, please.
All right. Do you think funding for public safety and policing in Napa is adequate? Would you support a property tax increase for more funding?
Is it adequate? No, not by any means, whether it be our average is super low. I've worked with the police department a number of times through work and eventually they let us know that they're not going to be responding to certain calls unless they meet a certain threshold. To me, that's embarrassing, especially as a resident of Napa. If any of you have any complaints against raising property taxes, I encourage you guys to do a ride-along. It's not very hard. You fill out a piece of paper and you go to that police station and they give you a call and work any shift. Go with those guys. I've done a number of them throughout the valley and to see that Napa has to basically choose what calls they go to. They primarily focus on in-progress, but then we still have burglaries or accidents or things that happened after the fact that they can't get to and then you get frustrated and you say, "Well, just file a report online." And to me, that's not fair, especially in one of the best cities, in the best city that we've been raided. They deserve a lot more and I think $6 per house is a, we should be ashamed of that. We should be supporting these guys day in and day out. Why did we have a shooting at McDonald's? Why are we having, you know, police chases and things like that? The sad part is, yeah, people are moving back to America, but they're also bringing some of that shit with them.
All right. Candidate Potter, would you like the question repeated?
No, I'm good. I am fully in support. I know our community safety is paramount. I am committed to providing the necessary resources for law enforcement without overburdening our taxpayers with excessive amounts. A well-funded police force ensures the safety and security of Napa, that Napa deserves. Again, that survey consistently has stated that safety is one of the number-one concerns for our citizens. I talked to our chief Huff not too long ago and he was telling me that he had, they have millions of dollars sitting there in impact fees that he can't use because they can't fund staffing. They can only fund capital improvements. So, I think we should have been taking that foregone more often. I commend this council for taking that foregone, but in taking the foregone, in all actuality, if you think about it, saves taxpayers in a lot of other ways if you're funding our police force. I think we're 30-something officers down and I don't know how many support staff. They can't mention that we can't support, they're not even answering certain calls because they just don't have them, the police officers, to go out and, you know, they're just like grandma needs to remove the spider from her house or something, I don't know. But I am, I would take the foregone and I'm in support of that.
All right. Candidate Niles, would you like me to repeat the question for you?
No, I'm okay, thank you. In short, I am in favor of increasing taxes to help fund and support our public services and the police force. I think public services are a very important part of the community. It's how we help each other and the police force is extremely needed and important part of the community and it is even more important that they have the adequate staffing that they require to do their job properly.
And finally, Mr. Lambert, do you think funding for public safety and policing in Napa is adequate? Would you support a property tax increase for more funding?
Well, the first part of the question, do I feel it's adequate? No. We need, we need to get to that 1.5 officers per thousand and we need to be ready for the growth that's coming to Napa. We need to be proactive and be able to see and, you know, rub the crystal ball, look into the future and say, "Okay, we're going, we're growing at this rate, we need to be here." So would I support a tax? The property tax, I would actually support because that's a very minute percent of the money, but it would actually help support the police officers. I spent 10 years as an Arizona Ranger, which is a volunteer organization, to assist the police officers down in Arizona. We were a force that was all over the state, that we were volunteers, but we were there so the police could do their job and we could do the traffic control or we could do other things. So there's lots of ways to find, ways to help the police department as citizens and as a part of the community and we need to find a way to do it. Other people have talked about this on the other, the other questions earlier today, about finding the money in other parts of the budget and transferring it over. There's ways to do it, but you have to be able to pull from one to the other and make everybody balanced, but I believe that public service is one of the things that is most important to this community. Thank you.
Recent growth, growth has produced more traffic in the city and community. What can the city do to alleviate congestion? We're throwing it back to candidate Solis and you got a minute.
So this one goes back to an earlier question or that I was, that I answered. It takes us 30 minutes to get across the bridge. Just like most parents, I'm trying to get diapers and beer for that situation. Sometimes those things are inevitable, such as the diapers, and we have to go get them. But we gotta, we gotta assess the situation all the way around it. We have the area being developed right just to the east, east of Target. How much longer until that bridge that we all use as a shortcut to get away from the Karcher exit, go over the bridge and across into Midland Road? How long until that one becomes even more congested, just not by the train? We need to be patient, we need to be smart. Yeah, there's a lot of things that the city council has no control over because everything was done years ago and decided on what was going to be there. But the best thing that we can do is look forward to the city of, well, the Napa Police Department's new traffic system and just be mindful of where everything's being built and what we're going to need to do next.
Candidate Potter, would you like the question repeated?
Sure.
Recent growth has produced more traffic. What can the city do to alleviate congestion?
Thank you. I mentioned earlier about mixed-use communities, you know, having smart growth, reducing traffic trips to areas. Also, I think by helping our public transit routes and supporting that with more reliable schedules for people to use the public transit would make, would promote, would reduce less traffic and promote, would could promote that, people using public transit more. But I really think that we just have to have the smart growth, working with developers as well to pay for the roads, to fix them. We don't have the money in the budget. I mean, I'm fiscally conservative and we need, where's that money going to come from? We're going to have to work together to make the most of that, so just.
Thank you. Candidate Niles, I'm just going to ask it again. Recent growth has produced more traffic. What can the city do to alleviate congestion?
Yeah. Personally, I think a huge help would be better public transit. I very rarely see buses out and about and I know that that would help a lot of people if we had a better public transit system to get people to and from work or to the store. It would help alleviate a lot of the congestion in roads and traffic on, yeah, the pavement because there would be less vehicles out there if we had a much better public transit system. Any large city has great public transit and we're not there yet in terms of size, but if we can plan ahead and make sure that we are growing our public transit with the growth of the city, that would be a huge help.
And candidate Lambert, with the recent growth and more traffic, what can the city do to alleviate congestion?
Well, my two candidates up here that were just before me, I touched on public transit and that's one of the big things that needs to be addressed. Reliable transportation, reliable public transit, having a set schedule that people can rely on. Those would actually alleviate a lot of traffic. Is that the answer? Probably not, because most people do short trips. Some people just go to the store to get diapers and other items and I didn't say, I didn't say the B-word, I left that for you. So, you know, but they have to make those short trips and you can't rely on the bus because the bus is only going one direction and then you got to ride it all the way around the circle to come back. So some people have to take their car. That's, the added growth puts more vehicles on the road, more heavy vehicles on the road and that actually creates wear and tear on our roads. And so we have road repairs and we have road widening, we have several issues. The city council needs to address this in a timely manner and speaking of time, I'm out of time.
Thank you for taking the initiative and noticing that. And candidate Griffin, do you need the question repeated?
I don't, thank you. Of the three things, public safety, traffic, there it is, it's number two. Traffic's a horrible issue, especially in District 6. We're right off the Karcher corridor. We all experience it every day and it's absolutely horrific. What can we do as council members? It's supporting our Public Works Department. Right now, they're implementing light-timing systems. The only thing, in my opinion, that Boise does right is the timing of those lights in downtown. It's one after the next, after the next, and you're constant flow into Boise. We're trying to implement that here and now and I think that's important and we need to be supporting Public Works to make sure that happens. I'm not a big fan of public transit taking over in that role. I don't see that it's being utilized and I've personally experienced it firsthand on those buses. Napa is not San Francisco. Folks like to be able to have a choice to go where they would like to go and the time that they'd like to do it and we should not be, in two years, paying $870,000 for that little service.
All right, thank you. And we will have the question about the auditorium district now and this time, we're going to start with Margie Potter and a minute and a half to answer this question. An effort is underway to create an auditorium district that could fund Napa's entertainment venues. I'm talking about Ford Idaho Center and the Civic Center with a lodging tax. Do you support the idea? Why or why not?
Thank you. Yes, I support the auditorium tax and I did sign the petition to get it on the ballot, which it did not make it onto the ballot, I believe, this time, but it's a win-win for us, I believe. It will save taxpayers and help with the much-needed improvements of the Idaho Center and the St. Pete Horse Park as well. We, I'm not sure how they came up with the mapping of it. I would like, be more interested in knowing how that happened because it seems like the whole city is the auditorium district, it looks like to me, but I supported it and I do think it is something that we have to, is a way of unburdening the taxpayers that live here.
Candidate Niles, I'll repeat, an effort underway to create an auditorium district that could fund Napa's entertainment venues by waging a lodging tax. Do you support the idea? Why or why not?
Yes, I do support the idea of a lodging tax for the auditorium district. I think it's going to be something that is required with the growth and as more people come to visit because of the growth, it's going to be something that helps fund our public services and keep our beautiful city beautiful. Yeah, I'm in favor of the tax.
Camet Lambert, would you like the question repeated?
Yes, please.
Okay. An effort underway to create an auditorium district. It would fund Napa's entertainment venues by levying a lodging tax. Do you support that idea? Why or why not?
Well, I've gone through this before with a lodging tax and it actually greatly increases the help of the city. Whether the, whether the money is earmarked directly for the Idaho Center and the Civic Center is another question that I would actually have to address whenever it went to, went to vote. But I support the housing tax on hotels and local lodging because people come in and out of here and that would actually alleviate a lot of local taxes to, again, keep our city beautiful and keep the things that people want when they come here alive and well. Thank you.
And Mr. Griffin, do you want the question repeated?
I'm okay, thank you. I like to look at this from a full 360 view and the question's, number one, what's an auditorium district? And I don't think a lot of folks know what that is. An auditorium district takes a certain area or zone of the city. The one proposed was 30-some-odd thousand folks and where those venues are located, those voters get to vote on whether this actually becomes a taxing district or not. So, we do not have that influence as, yes, we're voting on air, no, other than going to the ballot box, as do all of you. So, just to make that clear. Myself personally, I'm in favor of the auditorium district because I think it's essential for individuals coming to use our facilities to add damages or infrastructure wear and tear, that when it comes to future development, that we have something to dip into for a user fee. And I think that's what we should be realizing it is, it's a user fee. Individuals coming in from out of town to stay at our hotels right next to our venues to go and watch the rodeo, watch the PBR camp ground, which was just approved for a million and, $1.5 million. If we had an auditorium district in place, that would have paid for that expansion of the RV park. There are projects and growth that are going to come and individuals who are using those facilities should be paying for the wear and tear or the future expansion because you can't pay for the wear and tear of those projects, so I would be in favor of it.
All right, candidate Solis, I'll repeat for you. An effort underway to create an auditorium district that could fund Napa's entertainment venues by levying a lodging tax. Do you support the idea? Why or why not?
I am not very well informed on that whole issue, but in short, I would probably not be in favor for it. It is not very hard to get a cheaper hotel 15 minutes down the freeway. I want to be able to encourage people to stay here in Napa and not have to pay additional taxes, whether it's short-term, long-term, in a hotel, Airbnb, there's going to be tons of options, the RV park and whatnot. We could probably discourage people from staying in Napa with something as simple as that and we could look at many of different options to find funding, whether it's equal or greater. or greater.
Last question for the evening. Why are you the best candidate? We'll give each candidate two minutes to talk about that, and we will start with candidate Niles. Go ahead.
I don't necessarily know that I would be the best candidate to represent Nampa. I would love to think I am. I know that I'm not the usual candidate. I have different values and different beliefs, but I would embrace change, and I would embrace the diversity that we are turning into. Nampa is ever-evolving, just like the human race, and I would do what I could to embrace that and go with it and do what's best for everyone as much as possible, not just a select few.
Candidate Lambert, why are you the best candidate for District Six?
Well, as Jennifer just stated, I don't know if I am. That's up to you, okay? I know that, I bring 10 years' experience on city council to the table. I know I bring experience in the planning and zoning and experience in all different aspects of my life that I've come here. My ethics have always been brought to the table, and I vote the way the constituents want. So am I the best vote? That's up to you to decide. I'm going to vote for myself. I mean, I even leaned over toward, I even leaned over toward Sebastian during this, and I said, "You know, if I wasn't voting for myself, I'd vote for you." I mean, so that's what I told him earlier, because some of his answers were spot-on, okay? But this is where it comes down to the brass tacks. Am I the best vote? I hope so. I hope I can actually be the voice of the people and the voice for each one of you. Even if you're not in my district, I would actually listen to what you have to say. There's people that I've talked to, other towns, that I listen to what they have to say. It influences you on what your vote is, but it doesn't make your vote, because my vote is for what I believe in and what my hometown is. And Nampa is my hometown now. I've lived here, and I've homesteaded here. This is what I believe in, and this is why I believe that I would be the best candidate to speak for you on this council board. Thank you.
Candidate Griffin, what makes you the best candidate?
This is not our closing statement, correct? Or it is?
This is it.
This is the two minutes.
This is the last question.
I've got to pick apart what I was going to say. So I'll just end with this. I'm a fifth-generation Idahoan and a Nampa native. I'm a fiscal conservative and a conservative at heart rooted in faith. Nampa's my home. This is where we're raising our daughter, our noisy daughter. This is where I hope to raise many more kids, and I hope it's a safe place for you all to continue raising your kids and your grandkids, a place that we can all look to and achieve the mission statement, the greatest place to live, work, play, worship, and raise a family. I'm a candidate that understands that fully. I attend the council meetings. I know what's going on. I've been knocking doors, and I know the needs of my district, our neighborhood, our neighborhood, District Six. I want to engage not only the young people, not only the seniors, but everyone in between. This is a position where we represent the individuals within our district, and I will go and take every decision, not lightly, but with a perspective of, this is the taxpayers' dollars hard at work. How can we stretch the budget to where we don't have to go back and ask for more? How can we maintain an infrastructure that's strong enough for an incoming 10, 20, 30,000 people? Because that's a reality. I'm a candidate who's thinking to the future, not 10 years, not 20 years. I've got a long life ahead of me, and I want the decisions that I make right now for me to look back in 50, 60 years and say, "You know, I tried my best. I was thoughtful and prayerful in what I decided. I engaged my community," and I'll do that with every decision. This is not a role where I am the example. I'm a representative of the individuals of our district, and I'll keep that at the forefront. I'm so grateful everybody came out tonight. I think this is fantastic. This is how good policy gets created. This is how good candidates can know how to vote in the future. I think you should all applaud these individuals for running because this is not easy either. Thank you so much.
Candidate Solis, what makes you the best candidate for District Six?
Well, I'm a Nampa native. I went to all the schools here. My son will go to all the schools here. If he has brothers and sisters soon, they will as well. I don't have other big responsibilities. This would be the biggest responsibility that would be on my plate. I'm easy to reach, easy to talk to, and I care about our city. I love my family, and that's why we're here in Nampa still. And I'm a die-hard patriot. Not many times I get through the National Anthem at an event and not shed a tear just because everyone that moves here, everyone that we run into is just so nice. That's what you hear from people that visit. And I like to think that I play a big part in that, just like everyone else here. But in my opinion, I think I am the best qualified candidate for it. But again, that's up to you guys, and that's why we're here today. And respectfully, thank you guys all for the opportunity, and I hope everyone runs to the ballot box.
And candidate Potter, what makes you the best candidate?
Because experience matters, and I have that experience. I've lived here 33 years. I've been deeply involved in my community that entire time. I'm not an expert at all things, but I know who to go to to get those answers if I have questions because I'm just not knocking doors just now. I've been talking to people every single day for the last 33 years, and I know what's happening out there. On a daily basis, I'm involved in that. I've listened to people talking about, you know, the grocery store prices. I mean, I'm there myself, you know, and don't know if I can, you know, buy this or that. Gas is through the roof. Our taxes are going up. I've been sitting in city council meetings, every single city council meeting, even during COVID, while it was online, and it missed four with some extremely sinuating circumstances because I just am that involved in what's going on, and I want to know what's going on in my community. I was, I'm a part of the Healthy Impact Nampa Committee. I am part of the Downtown Economic Development Committee, economic vitality of our downtown. Sat on the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, part of that. The Region Three Housing Coalition Chair. I sit on our Food Access Committee, a traveling table that brings needed food to people in food deserts. Want to know more about that? Talk to me later. I am fiscally conservative, and my most proud thing that I am is Nampa Ready. And Amy Bowman's over there because during COVID, this community came together and took care of the needs of everybody that needed something in this community, and that is a fantastic place to be in the city of Nampa, and I've not seen that happen anywhere else. So I want to thank Amy for that, too.
We'll get you out of here five minutes early so you can hopefully network and recognize everybody. I, too, just want to congratulate all the candidates and even the ones out there. It is not an easy task. Thank you to the Press, Matt and Teddy, thank you for being here. Mayor's office, I know Mayor's back there, but Amy, thank you for all your work. I see Nampa's finest is here, and there was a lot of discussion about our police officers, so thank you for your service. He was mentioned here, too. Lots of really cool, friendly people in the crowd, Representative Roden and Cornelius are here also. First and foremost, thank you to all of you and online for taking the time to be educated. So go vote November 7th, and Amy just texted me, okay, early voting, Hispanic Culture Center, October 23rd through November 3rd, Monday through Friday. But you can go to the website and get all this information. Most importantly, be educated and go vote. Anything I'm forgetting? Amy, anybody? Thank you for being here, and go vote November 7th.
State of the City, Washington.
Yeah, State of the City's coming up, and thank you to the other council men and women that were here also. So we live in a great place, and let's continue to work hard to do that. So thank you for being here.
Thanks, man.